That's going to be here. We'll start the meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the January 26, 2009 minutes moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by the mayor. If I have any questions or comments of the mission, Counselor -- sorry, to the minutes, Counselor Wing.
Just on page two, item three, I declared a conflict and didn't participate in the vote that isn't reflected here.
Okay. So I noticed. We'll make that change. Any other questions or comments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, closed motions carried. First item on the agenda is talking about the budget, and we have Mr. Dulevik that's going to address counsel in regards to spending cuts.
Yeah, before I get started, I just want to draw council committee's attention to a revised summary sheet that was provided in the cost cutting that council that was requested two weeks ago, and it's you'll see highlights in yellow on that, and I'll explain that further. That is some deficits, some easy cuts, and we'll talk about that a little later on when we get into what staff is recommending. Just go to the PowerPoint presentation. Dean, if you could go to the next slide. And just kind of give you a recap of how we got here today. As you remember, the initial budget shortfall talked about $8.8 million, and as a result, at our first meeting to discuss the budget on December 15th, council made a number of recommendations to staff as a result of considerations we provided, that being using the $3.9 million from the province, reducing the downtown CIP, elimination of leaf pickup, reduction of transit fuel, reduction in permissive grants, and finally, reduction of animal control services that provide us $5.25 million in savings, which left us with $3.55 million in additional reductions that were required to get down to a 0% budget increase. Dean? As a result of the recommendation, we went back to the directors to get down to talk about getting down to 0%. So the each of the directors were required to review their departmental budgets. They were requested five either find a 5% reduction in expenses or find other revenue sources. Next, Dean. So as a result, you got this package just on Friday that gives you a long list of potential budget reductions that staff came up with, and it's just over $2 million, and what we've highlighted here is just by the various groups and the reductions, be it cost-cutting suggestions or revenue enhancements. Dean, next slide. And as you see, they totaled just over $2 million. Dean? So if council were to implement all the suggested cuts, that would still leave us $1.535 million in cuts or other revenues that we would need to get down to 0% to balance the budget.
I have a question by Counselor Inoney.
Thank you. Through to Mr. Dulevik. Mr. Dulevik, with the package you gave us and the highlights you have here, to me, the highlights you have here are no brainers. So you're just looking for a motion to pass and then debate the rest of them?
To the chair. Yeah, we called those no brainers also, and as I said, it's appreciate, you know, it was quite a bit of work in trying to get the package together for Friday. Staff had some more time to think about it, and we thought the best way to kind of focus our discussion tonight was to highlight in yellow what staff, and as you termed, no brainers. Really, these are cuts that really don't impact levels of service. What you'll see there is where we haven't spent money in some areas for a number of years on those budgets, easy to take out. Other areas you'll see from a staffing where we budgeted for a full year for a CAO. Well, we still don't have a CAO. We don't need the budget for the full year, so there's some reductions in those areas. So it is staff's recommendation that to focus the discussion, simply move, we would ask council to move the cuts, which totaled almost $575,000 that's highlighted in yellow, as a starting point to move forward, and then focus in on those ones that we haven't highlighted yet to have some discussions, because as noted in the detail sheets, there is some impact to levels of service and what and what we can do if those if those cuts are made.
Thank you. I'll move the highlighted recommendations before us.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Inoney, seconded by Counselor Wing, that the highlighted items that we have in our handout be deleted from this year's operating budget. Any questions to the motion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Closed motions carried. Thank you.
So I think that gets us down to about $3 million now in cuts that we're looking to that we're looking for from council, and we're open now to any questions that council may have with respect to what staff has suggested in these lists.
Okay, Counselor Fisher, first, please.
Very quickly, I want to thank you for this hard work, and I know this is hard work, and I know we still have a way to go, but I wanted to start. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to add one more thing, and I forgot to add that. I know there was also discussion with respect to conferences and conventions, and staff will be working on that, and there'll be some, we haven't fully explored it, but we anticipate there'll be some reductions there. If you remember that, I think that total budget was only $100,000, but there'll be some reductions there, and we'll be working on that and bringing that forward.
Okay. Counselor Inoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Mr. Dulevik. We had a conversation on Friday in regards to this package, and maybe I'd like to throw out to council, we have the museum board here, and I'd like to thank them for coming, and that's going to be a topic in a little bit, but in within this suggested recommendations, there was a recommendation to take a look at our pools and the services we provide our pools, and when Mr. Dulevik spoke to me first, my first response is it's been forever and today has been no way. And then I thought, it's kind of hypocritical, I'm looking at at asking the museum to be more accountable, so maybe we have to take a closer look at something I wouldn't have looked at before, and that's our pools. And if you note, you know, the numbers of usages down quite substantially. So you handed us a plethora of pools. What were you looking for direction for us from? Because if we were looking at the lowest number pool, number of lowest usages, like how do you want us to look at this? Because that would be my first inclination.
Yeah, through the chair, we're not looking for council to pick a pool. I think what we're trying to find out tonight, is there a desire to close a pool? And I think what we talked about, and I know there's a little misunderstanding, we're talking about closing a pool, we didn't identify which one.
Which one?
And we also talked about closing the Mitchelson Splash Pad. There's some significant costs that they were going to need there to keep it open. My understanding, it's not well-used. So, you know, we're recommending definitely the Mitchelson Splash Pad, but we have not identified a pool, but I think what we're looking at is that--
You're looking for a motion to ask you to come back with a recommendation telling us which pool? Are you looking at, let's be blunt here, are you looking at us to pick a pool, or are you looking at Parks and Rec coming back and telling us which would be the biggest cost savings for them?
I think, you know, we as staff are prepared to recommend a pool to council, but I think the first step was, you know, as I talked to various members of council, there was concern about even closing a pool, and I think the first hurdle we had to get over was, is council open to closing down one of the pools? And if if there is a desire, yes, we're prepared to do that. I think staff would then come back with with more information as to justify which pool would be closed.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Dulevik. I think at this point, when we're down to looking at at closing services and facilities, we know we're under the eight ball, and, you know, we've all said we can't pick pet projects, and we shouldn't be picking on one service as opposed to another, so I think we really need to have staff bring us back. If you can see substantial savings in in closing one, my concern isn't just for '09. You've told us in '10 it's going to be worse. We don't have the $3.9 million to use. I watched a TD economic forecast today, and you kind of want to shut your door and never leave. It's getting so bad. So I think we really have to make deeper cuts than we were prepared to look at previously. While I hate to cut services, and that's what people elect us for, is to make the difficult decisions and not just hand them to staff, so I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to to look deeper into that, and I don't know whether you want to suggest this pool, but I'd like to ask you to bring back a recommendation that will show us the savings, what you think would be the highest cost savings in streamlining our pool services.
Do I have a second there to the motion, first of all? Counselor Wing? Any debate before I call the motion? If there are no comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Mayor Salsi.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I think I can certainly begin the cuts in looking at the office of the mayor. I know that staff identified the $5,000 that's not on this list as a matter we've just cut, so I'd like to say that we can certainly cut that $5,000 from the office of the mayor. Also, I'd like to offer additional savings. The year 2005, under the general office budget, we were at $55,000. That's been going down each year. This year, actually, last past year was $27,000, and of that amount, we have also promotion, which back in 2005 was $49,000, which has been reduced to $31.5, and advertising was $8,000, which has gone up to $15,000. I think we can bring that advertising budget down somewhat, so I'd like to recommend another $5,000 slash in the advertising.
And you're making that a motion?
I am, along with the amount of promotional items being reduced further by $5,000, which is one of the recommended cuts here, which we haven't adopted yet, so we'll start with those two. I'd make that motion.
A motion by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Inoney. Questions or comments to the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Wing.
I'd like to start by thanking staff for coming up with all the savings they've come up with. Some of these are really impressive, like over a half million from parks, $400,000 from fire services. I was really impressed with the exercise the library went through in their letter saying that they'll continue to be a responsible municipal partner by exercising financial restraint. I appreciate what Ted has just done in reducing the frills, I guess we'll call them, in the mayor's office. I really, really appreciate all this. The one that really caught my eye was the building services recommendation that we sell various city-owned buildings not being used to conduct city business, and it's not just saving the ongoing costs, but as of 2010, with these being public buildings, we're going to have to make them accessible as well, which is something we simply can't afford to do. So first of all, I'd like to say I do have a conflict with the armory, because it's under the care and control of the Board of Museums, who is my husband's employer, and I'd like to caution, though, that the community resources building, the armory, the will-be community hall, and Chippewa Town Hall are all designated buildings, so that does need to be taken into consideration when we put those on the market, if that's the direction we go. But I'm just trying to get a handle on where we're at. Is it the community resource building that's going to be the subject of an upcoming report, or all of them? Because there's the St. John Ambulance Building, Fire Hall Theater, Sea Cadets Building in there as well, in addition to those already listed. How quickly can we look at potentially reducing these costs?
Through the chair, we want to look at all our buildings, and it's surprising when we've gone through the extras with PSAB, and we start looking at all the properties we do own, and 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 we want to bring that to council's attention, along with the various agreements we have with these groups. I found it from staff over the last couple of years, you know, buildings that we don't occupy, that we simply rent to them for a dollar, we're still responsible for the major repairs to it, and we've spent in the last couple of years over $290,000 on those buildings that we don't occupy. Just recently, we've gotten some concerns raised by St. John Ambulance with a problem with the roof in the building that they're in. And again, we're responsible for that, but we don't use that building. They rent it for a dollar a year, you know, they pay the, you know, for gas, natural gas, electricity that they use, and water and sewer, but any major repairs, other than wear and tear, we're responsible for. Maybe it's time to look at all of these facilities that we have out there, and is it time to simply say, you know, we're either sell the buildings, or council's decision, maybe we turn the buildings over to the groups, saying it's your responsibility now, just to avoid these future costs that may come. So what we want to do is bring forward a report on each of the buildings and what role they play, should we sell them, you know, do they fit with the programs that we offer through the city?
Okay, you've answered one of my other questions. I was thinking about Fire Hall Theater and Peterson Workshop, the Sea Cadets, and I was going to ask, you know, can we possibly offer them at, you know, $2 or something like that? Okay. It's just a matter of saving the money, not having to make them publicly accessible, because I know that will be extremely costly in some of the cases. When I look at that figure up there, there is obviously a long ways to go yet. I'm wondering if it's possible to ask each department to come back with, I mean, I hate to ask you, but to offer up a service potentially for us to cut, which would be the one that they see as being least missed by the community? Because we're getting into a really hard year. Next year, we understand is going to be harder. We just can't keep spending at the level we're spending in this kind of economic climate. Is that something that the staff would be able to do?
Through the chair, I think I think this is where we're starting to get into some difficulty. You know, a staff, we may recommend certain services potentially, and if it's eliminated, there could be a public outcry, and then there's, you know, was it, you said it was okay to cut, and I think this is where we're getting into some difficulty. I mean, do you want to reduce winter maintenance? I mean, just a couple of years ago, we increased that that service because of the complaints we're getting from the public. So it's starting to get, you know, it's starting to get very difficult. I think we're at the point, other than what we've offered up into this package, you know, council has to look seriously at, you know, do you want to start cutting services? We haven't touched our capital expenditures here and our infrastructure spending. None of that's been touched right now, and those are some significantly large budgets. You know, there's some significant dollars there. But based on the discussion we've seen today from council, there doesn't, they don't seem to want to move in that direction. We may have to deal with it next year because of the the issues with the $3.9. And so if if council is interested in service reductions, then staff's going to have to look at it long and hard to see, you know, where where can we get some savings this year? It may be very difficult, just because of, you know, a lot of our services are tied into our staffing levels. And that's one thing I wanted to talk about. If we do move forward, because it is a three-year problem, you know, do we start looking at staffing? And I'm not talking about doing layoffs or or terminations, but do we start saying, it's time to reduce our numbers and start going forward, let's let's reduce our staffing complement through attrition, because it represents, if you look at salaries, wages, benefits, it represents 47% of our total budget. So it's quite a large area, which we really haven't focused too much on right now through these cost-cutting measures. I think we've identified in the package right now where people were looking for additional staff and saying, well, no, we won't hire those. But not only we're not talking about getting additional complement, we're talking about actually reducing the numbers. And that may have an impact on service, depending on on where we want to go.
Okay. I, especially in this economy, I think that spending on infrastructure is really important, and I'd like us to maintain that as much as we can, and I think really moving forward into the next two, three years, however long it takes to pull out of this, I think reductions in operating costs are really where we have to go.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Inoney, and then Counselor Maves.
Well, let's go through the list, then, because they gave us the list. We've covered the unhighlighted ones. Now let's cover, oh, Mr. Dulevik, you can stand there. Don't even bother sitting down. Let's walk through the the rest of the list, then, because, you know, there's a comment in the papers today in regards to having things we want as opposed to things we need. So let's look at what do we need? You started at the top with landscape beautification materials, $40,000. Landscape beautification labor and benefits, $67,000. So I want to go to the landscape staff contract, because the first one, to me, is a no-brainer. But the second one, where it is landscape beautification project, the $60,000 labor and benefits, are we putting somebody out of a job, or are we not hiring somebody?
At least not hiring someone.
So we're not eliminating a position?
No.
Because I think we have to be cognizant of that, too. I'd hate tomorrow's newspaper to read. Not only are we going to discuss later a future plant closing, but, you know, I'd hate to see it be now the city starts laying off people. So that's $107,000, almost $108,000, so that, pardon me? $107,000, so that our landscape entrances at parks and gateways can look pretty. To me, that's a want as opposed to a need right now, and, you know, we don't take these cuts lightly, and and it crushes us to stand here and start looking at things as minute as our flowers, but at this point, that's not something we need to run the city. So I'd like to take, actually, I at this point don't think we need improvement on our floats either, our parade floats, that's hardly a need also. So I'd like to, one, two, and three on our list, landscape beautification materials, which is $40,000, landscape beautification labor and benefits, and the Canada Day Parade float for $5,000. I'd like to make a motion, based on the information in front of us, that we eliminate that spending.
For 2009?
For 2009.
Do I have a second there? I have a second there by the mayor. Do I have any questions or comments to the motion? Counselor Wing?
I'll support it, because we need to cut, but, you know, I was in the Santa Claus parade, and that float of ours is in really, really sorry shape. I think we may have to just consider keeping it out of parades over the next few years, because it's going to get only worse, but we've got to cut. That's all there is to it.
Okay. Any other comments to the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Counselor Inoney.
Thank you. Other cultural services, Grant Niagara Falls Art Gallery. I'm sorry? I'm glad to see you're on a seconding binge.
He was going to say, remove these, just to take everything out. What comes back here?
Oh, I like that. I'd like to move all the budget reduction cuts that are handed to us, and for those of us that want to put what we think needs to go back, go back. I've read through it, I'm sure everybody else has. Rather than go line by line, I'd like to move the reductions since, as we're doing that, can Mr. Bergen, as I'm sure he's tallying behind us, tell us what we've actually cut? So I'd like to make that a motion.
Do I have a second there to that motion? First of all, to take everything that is in staff's report out? I have a second there by Counselor Maves. Any questions or comments to the motion? Counselor Inoney.
As we've gone, some of these highlight contract services, contract services in engineering, in in transportation, and all of those, have we put all contract services in here?
All the ones that, a lot of those ones are, not all of them, but these are ones that we felt have the least impact on what we what we are doing. I mean, we still have contracted services.
But staff inside can do this work?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I want to know.
Mayor Salsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a point of clarification. The submission by staff on the operating budget cuts with total roughly $2 million, and what we actually have cut to at this point with the yellow highlighting has been about 574, about $580,000, let's say $85,000. What what further, if we if we don't add these things back, are we exceeding that 1.5? Can you qualify the 1.535 vis a vis the the $2,017 and the roughly $600,000 we have here?
I think if we were to-- I think the only, through the chair, the only thing you've added on is an additional $5,000, Ken, which is from Mr. Mayor, from your budget on advertising.
Five and five.
Well, yeah, but the five was already in there before, so it's an additional five. So the 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 total of 2, $2,017 is now $2,023, so that number's now $1,530,000, if the motion passed as is, and there's nothing put back in.
Counselor Inoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the motion on the floor, rather than pass the motion and then put back things, I'd like to take a look at, under grants, under our grants, we have $31,004 to take out for Project Share. We've all got the numbers on a number of different boards we sat at, asking, Project Share asking us for money, and how much the usage is up with this economy, the way it is, and jobs being eliminated. I think that's the one service I can see here that is the one we can't afford to cut, and they can't afford for us to cut them. Simp, I mean--
Are you going to make the motion put back? Are we going to vote on this one first?
No, I don't think we should--
She's asking for an amendment to the motion.
I'm asking for an amendment to the motion, so that that can be, the 31,4 can stay in. I thought that's the way he wanted to do it.
Mr. Mayor was the second there? That's acceptable?
Sure, I'll--
That's the one.
Okay. Okay, any comments? Counselor Wing?
Actually, I think there's two. The YWCA is going to be finding the same kind of pressures as Project Share. It's, you know, $6,675 may be very little to our budget, but it is a huge amount to theirs. They already were running low on food last year. You know, I look at them as very similar to Project Share, offering food and shelter and--
Can we do that?
Skills and all kinds of assistance. So, you know, that would be when I would add back in along with Project Share.
I'll ask the mover in second there if that's a friendly amendment? No? Okay. Thank you.
Can we hold on them separately, then?
Yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, you're going to have to come to a point where you're going to have to--
Exactly. Take the motion, and then if anyone wants to put anything back in--
Thank you.
Then they make a motion. Okay. The motion on the floor is for the entire report right now with the exclusion of Project Share. Are there any questions or comments to the actual motion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion's carried. Counselor Wing?
I'll move that the $6,675 for the YWCA be put back in.
Looking for a second there to the motion? Anyone like to second the motion? Okay, with no second there, then the motion dies. Mr. Dulevik? I'm sorry. Counselor Carrio.
Was the staff looking for a motion from this council to bring back the report on the disposition of these buildings? Either the reporter--
What, through the chair, just by approving this, it's our understanding, we will be coming back. It was something that staff was planning. I think we just wanted to bring this to council's attention, that it's something that we've been working on, actually, before this whole budget process. As we started, as we were going through the PSAB process, we were noticing, you know, we have quite a few buildings, and 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 I'm sure, as I found, I'm sure the majority of council doesn't realize how many buildings the city does own, and, you know, what are these agreements we have with these various user groups? And I think it's to bring council up to date, and how do you want to proceed with, you know, do we dispose of it on the open market? Do we simply turn it over to the groups and saying, you know, we're out of the game here?
You better off just to give them the bill.
Yeah. But that's something that council have to deal, once they have this, I think, it's a report, we discuss all the buildings, all the agreements, and what the issues are with them.
There's two in here, there's two that are missing. What about the Stanford Arena and the Niagara Falls?
Based on what was approved for the the four pad itself, those buildings will be sold. So that's how we're proceeding. It's just a timing issue, and I've spoken to the director, Denise Morrissey, about that, and and it's a timing of when we're going to come with a report to council to declare it surplus, and then put it on the open markets. So it's it's just a timing issue, but that's the plan, because council's already told us those buildings are to be shut down and sold.
Could we not come back with a report on that sooner than later? The suggestion that they made was, get rid of them now, make a deal with whoever buys them. Let me get the use of them, or whatever, or at least that, for the amount of time we need. Why don't we push that forward? Get those come back, let's run it.
Okay, I think the mayor wants to speak on that point.
Thank you. To that point, I appreciate Counselor Carrio's comments. However, I'd like to have our council consider the highest and best use for each of these sites. If that's the case, I think council should be getting the maximum it can from each of these sites in terms of what they would be eventually used for. And if they become, for example, a multifamily site, I'd like to have the chance to rezone those sites, so that we would get the benefit selling them as zone sites. So with that in mind, we did the same thing when, you know, we took the land across from Community Center, which was virtually useless in value because of the fact it was a disposal site. We're able to take that and convert it into $6 million of value for the for the taxpayers, and I'm very proud that we're able to do that by by actually zoning the property correctly before we sold it. So having given that consideration, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if an advanced sale would be able to allow us to do the rezoning, but certainly we'll, we can have the potential of looking at the use, and I would suggest that maybe Counselor Carrio might want to make a motion that would get us in a position to look at the highest and best use for each site, that would fall in line with our official plan as well, so that we could rezone those properties, and get a staff report back to to do that, and then report back on the potential value if they were to become something else, and then knowing what direction you want to go.
Counselor Carrio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was assuming that that's what would happen. I was assuming that when the staff came back with the report, that that would be part of the report.[1670.83] of the report. So I'll assume that we get to see that the better. And let's say if we have to go through the rezoning, let's start it now. Just, all I'm saying is, let's get on with it. I'm assuming we're never going to sell a piece of property again, without getting the best value, place the best use. But let's get going. So I agree.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by the mayor, that a report be brought back from staff that outlines the highest and best use of the arenas that we're planning to sell once the new four pad opens.
Along with appraisal.
Along with an appraisal. Thank you. Any questions or comments to the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Mr. Dulevik, back to you.
Yes, through the chair. You know, I briefly touched on about, we talked about the staffing costs and how significant they are, and we're just looking for council's direction on that. Is that something that they'll support, to look at our staffing levels, and look at ways of reducing those numbers? And as we're talking, we're talking about through attrition.
Is that a hiring freeze?
It's called a hiring freeze. Some people have a different definition of hiring freezes. I know I've talked to several different people. Some have said, well, if your complement's 500, a hiring freeze means you don't go above 500. And someone else will know, if it's your complement's 500, a hiring freeze means is your numbers actually start going down. So that's what I'm looking for. Do you want to see a reduction in that expenditure over time? Because as we're talking about, we do have a challenge, a multiple-year challenge here, and it is a large portion of our budget. So we're just looking, is council supportive of that? And understanding there may be some other acts of service in the future on this as we reduce our staffing numbers.
Okay. Mayor Salsi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I had a chance to discuss with our acting CAOs the potential of this impact, and knowing that 47% of our budget covers staffing and benefits, I'd like to make a motion to have staff investigate, to sit along with our Director of HR, the potential reduction that could be made through attrition only at this point, and to see what we have coming up this next year for those who may be retiring or leaving their posts, and to see what kind of savings that may involve, so what they can give us, maybe a little projection as to what we might anticipate if we don't replace those jobs that would be coming due to attrition and retirement. So I'd ask for that report to be given to staff.
Okay. I have a bunch of people around the table that seconded it. Counselor Carrio.
I'd like to second it and just make the comment that, as the city becomes more efficient, we might be able to do the same work today with 40 or 50 bodies less than we did 10 years ago with 500. So I think it's worth a look at it. I know every time we talk to a staff person, they become much more efficient. So I'm sure there's ways to do the same work with less bodies. And I would not be for leaving people off. I think that could be what we lost to help create employment through attrition. That's a different story.
Okay. I'd like to suggest, actually, that if we were planning on going down this road, that we would also need some type of strategy in place for redeployment, if that's what we were going to look at. There's no sense in just not filling positions. We would have to have a strategy in place to know where we can shift people around. So I don't know if that would be part of the motion, or if staff would be bringing a suggestion back on...
Through the chair, there has been some discussion. I know that with Mr. Burton and myself, and I think what we need to do is prioritize, you know, what are the priority services? Where do we need the staff in certain areas? And as we talk about hiring freeze, there may be positionings opening up. We would still post them, like I say, through the union, and we're trying to get internal staff to move into those positions. And they may come from areas where we don't need to fill that position where they're coming from. But again, I think what the strategy has to be is, what are the priorities, the priority areas where, you know, we need to provide those services, and we need the staffing in those areas? And are there other ways of accomplishing other tasks at hand?
There's a motion on the floor that staff bring back a report dealing with this issue. Any questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Are you up for the next item as well?
Sure.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the board of museums funding. I'll ask Mr. Dulevik to introduce it, please.
Well, I think, I know there's been some suggestion on the board of museums and the work they do, and they have provided a letter, I believe, which is in your package, with some cuts. And I know Mr. West is here and he'll speak to that, and I think turn it over to him, if the committee so desires to talk about what they're proposing.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. West.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, your worship members of the committee. Thank you very much for seeing us tonight. I will draw your attention, as Ed has, to the letter that's in your packages. I apologize for it not having gotten to you sooner. We were in kind of a rush last week as well to get this done. And you will find from that letter that we have not only gone back to 2008 level, but looked at a 2% decrease from 2008, which is a further $13,235 approximately, which is overall about $38,000 reduction over our initial 2009 ask. Part of that, I noticed that you're discussing the armory. Part of that is that we get to use the armory for storage. Presently, we're paying $3,590 for storage of our property. If we can move our stuff into the armory, which we already pay for, then we could save the $3,590. Further to that, we were going to ask at a future date to be able to use the armory as storage for the museum itself when we close the museum, to have it rebuilt, and the addition put onto it, and therefore saving much more than $3,590, and using a city building that is presently not being used. If you wish, I guess what I can tell you about this is that the board and staff sat down together to go through the budget as it was. With me tonight are most of the board and almost all of the staff in support of the cuts that we have made. We went to the staff specifically because we were looking for the kinds of cuts that would not significantly impact our public programming, which is what we're there for. And we have come up with this, which is in effect, as I have said, a 2% reduction from our 2008 budget. Is there anything I can answer?
Okay. I'll see if there's any questions to council. Counselor Carrio.
In this decrease, if someone was asked, they asked the question, does anyone lose their job in this budget?
No. What we have actually done is either ask or inform the staff, I guess, that they won't be getting any increase this year, so that saves us a considerable amount of money. But nobody, the way we put this out, nobody loses a job. And no hours are reduced in staffing either.
Okay. I have Counselor Ayanoni, Wayne, and Mase, please. Just wanted to clear conflict, sorry.
Yeah, I have a conflict on this part of him. He says my husband's lawyer.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Mr. West. Thank you, Kathy Powell, who took the opportunity to sit down with me, I think it was last Friday, for a couple hours, and walked me through all my questions I had, and I appreciate it very much. And while I'm glad to see you brought back cuts, clearly from our conversation, you know, I don't think those cuts are deep enough in regards to your operation. And you and Kathy had asked for numerous suggestions, and I think for every time you said, "Tell us what to cut," I think I told you, I can't tell you what to cut. It has to be done around this council table. I will say that I learned something important when I was there, and it was, you knew I took notes, because I read them back to you as we were sitting there. The major purpose of our museum is to care for the history of our community. That's what I got out of that meeting, and actually that came from you verbatim. I want to say that I think that the operation can be run much more efficiently. I think that, just before I keep going, did you get your money from the feds yet? You were...
We have heard nothing.
Okay, thank you. I think that if this was one of our services, in one of our departments, we'd be telling them to go back and cut immensely. I have a really difficult time with paying for two full-time staff positions at the Chippewa-Wilhelby Museum, not because it's Chippewa-Wilhelby, but because it's not open 10 months out of the year. And I have a problem with two full-time staff members being there while it's closed. And when I asked why there's always staff in Chippewa and Willoughby, the comment made to me was the exhibits won't change if full-time staff are not there year-round. So you rotate the exhibits, so that people who come in wouldn't see the exhibit, same exhibit over and over again. And while that makes sense to me, your numbers clearly dictate, you don't have a lot of people going in to see those exhibits. One of the suggestions I'd like to ask, and I think I'll put a motion on the floor right now, is that we do the same type of thing we did with transit, and that we asked Niagara Falls Tourism to do, and to have our staff, at that point, we asked Niagara Falls Tourism to hire a consultant to do an operational review. We don't have that problem here, because we are the major funder for the museum. And what I'd like to see is us find, we still have a million five that we have to find up there, and if I were making the decision myself, I can find a couple hundred thousand in their operating budget that I think that could be trimmed. And Counselor Carrio, I did raise the comment through my meeting with Gord and Kathy in regards to jobs, and I'd like to thank you, because Gord pointed out to me that his job had been in HR, and if I shouldn't be worried about the jobs at that, I should be taking a look at the bottom line. And as much as we hate to do it, with the nine of us sitting around here, the bottom line is what's important. I did homework, looking at other municipalities that assume their museums and run the museum operations. And quite frankly, there is not the support around this table to take the $2 million out of the funding, and so I would make a motion that I thought would not go anywhere. So to put that to rest, I'm not even addressing that. And quite frankly, I think, you know, the newspapers' kind is sensationalized, it's somewhat like an inquire, like this is Raw versus SmackDown, and we're going to go after each other. We had, I think, a very productive two-hour meeting, and our purpose is just to look to save money. Other municipalities have taken on their museums, and they've done it effectively. I think if we put Parks and Rec and Culture in control of this operation and the budget, that efficiencies would be found immediately. And we saw that just by the exercise that staff gave us here, that we just told them that we thought they'd done a great job on. So I'd like to make a motion that staff bring back a report, look, that would tell us the benefits and the potential savings in amalgamating the museum operation into a city operation similar to the transit board, and tell us what efficiencies we can find. If there's none, then it's a moot point.
Okay, do I have a second to the motion, first of all? Second for the motion for a report back from staff.
Can we get a comment from staff, initial comment from staff, their suggestion? I think this has been tried before. Can we just get a comment from staff?
Sure. Mr. Dulevik?
I'll take a shot at that one. Yeah, there was a study done a number of years ago that talked about more staff involvement than looking at the museum board. So I think it would just be a matter of resurrecting that, to bring in that information back before committee, to kind of reacquaint them with what was done. I think we can look at some numbers fairly quickly and provide this information to committee if they are so interested in it.
Okay, Counselor Ayanoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know for the time that I've sat here, we haven't invested $2 million into the museum in any of the time I've sat here. When you consider that it's an $11.2 million project that's going to be an asset for the city and the council, I think maybe we need to take a better look at how it's being managed. We haven't had that type of asset before, nor have we invested that kind of money while we're sitting around here. So simply for information purposes as well, I'd like to ask for that report. We're not going to pass this operational budget tonight anyway, and that would give us further information in regards to the museum.
Okay, let's see if we get a second to the motion. Counselor Daddie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know, my feeling is, right now, we're asking the staff to cut back, and we're giving them more work to do. I think the museum board has done a great job at taking the museum into a new direction, securing provincial and federal funds. I think this is a volunteer board that has done an outstanding job at bringing something here in a timely fashion, through the Battle of 1812, sitting on our radar. And I think right now is not a good time to do something like that. I think we need to let them grow on the path they're going, and show support for what they're doing. And I will not support that.
Okay. Mayor Salsi.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that Counselor Daddie is right on, and I appreciate the comments. We have Mr. West here, along with a very dedicated board of museums, individuals who have been volunteers, they've worked hard. I don't want to really decrease their enthusiasm. They're out raising money as we speak, and donations. They have the conviction of coming here to stand before us, to present their budget. I talked about this, we're talking about two different things. One is an operational issue, one, of course, is a capital improvement project, which I think will take us to a new level. I don't want to change anything at this point that would disrupt that. I'm not sure if Mr. West would like to make a comment with respect to what he's heard so far as well, with regard to at least the morale on the board and the capacity for them to function. They have an opportunity, and I'm not sure at this point whether bringing them into a city hall operation would be more efficient. I look at cost comparisons in terms of wages and things, and so I'm not sure if there's actual savings. So at this point, I couldn't support that motion either.
Okay. Counselor Fisher.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I've sat on the museum board for many years, probably more than 12. I've seen it revolve from basically doing very little to a very vibrant board and a very vibrant museum. Yes, the concerns I've had over the years is, it doesn't invite you there. That is why this project that they're bringing forward is, so the people can see where the museum is, so they can exhibit the wonderful artifacts that are being stored. I really believe they have done their job. Yes, it's a lot of money, but in the very, very near future, we're going to have one of the finest celebrations coming forward. And we probably are the hub of that celebration, because this is where the battle was fought, here in this city, in the rural area. So I too have to support the museum board. I realize the problems that are there, but I think they've been trying to work to bring them forward, and I will support the museum board. Thank you.
Okay. With no second, there is no motion on the floor, by the way, so I'll ask once again if there's a second to the motion, and then perhaps we can move on. Is there a second to the motion for a report back from staff? Seeing none, then we'll move on. You still have the floor.
I don't remember talking about the board. The mayor speaks about the morale on the board. I haven't criticized the board whatsoever, ever. Not even with Gord and Kathy. Not one time. You know, and, you know, emotion's made and emotion fails. But if we're voting on sentimentality now, as opposed to proper investment of dollars, this budget doesn't fly. So do the numbers yourself. That's why we gave them to you, and that's why I ask that you have them. We're spending $104,000 a year on operation for the Chippewa-Wilhelby site that's closed 10 months out of the year. Come on.
May I? I'm sorry. Willoughby is open from Victoria Day until Thanksgiving weekend, which is considerably longer than two months. The schoolhouse that is there, for those of you that have been there, have seen it, and in order to change an exhibit, you, in essence, close the museum. What is happening this winter is that they have gone back, quite literally, to the bare walls and pulled everything out, and are starting again from the bare walls and moving their way in. Were we to do that, and I've had conversation with tourism operators in the city, to say, if you were to begin, when you open, to change something, what would that do to you? Well, essentially, that would close us down for the time that we were normally open, in order to change that around. Essentially, Willoughby, this is how Willoughby exists and why it is in fact closed. We inherited Willoughby as part of our bylaw when the city itself amalgamated with Chippewa. It was our mandate to, as we have told you before, to operate all the buildings that belonged to the city that were of an historic nature, so we took this one on. And this is how we see it run. Those people that run museums see it best done in this manner. As to a review, if that's what the city wishes, then certainly we will have a review. It was done about seven years ago, as Ed said, and as Mr. Dulevik said, and at that time, it was decided that the museum runs more efficiently as it is run now than to be taken on by the city. We also did a review, and my remembrance is that the city actually paid for a review. I'm an outside consultant, and we put into place those changes that were asked of us at that time in order to run more efficiently. And we believe that we have taken every step necessary to run these museums the way they need to be run. In the future, I think that what we're looking at is the potential for an enormous celebration in the city, and it has become the board's task to do that for the city, to put together the bicentennial celebrations over a period of in excess of three years. For that, I need, we need, the city needs what we have. And I don't think, if you'll forgive me, that there's anything sentimental in that at all.
Okay. Counselor Ayanoni still has the floor.
Thank you. Three to Mr. West. Mr. West, what's your end-use vision for the museum? For your new museum?
My end-use vision?
Yeah, because when I sat with you, you discussed a number of things. You talked about the meetings rooms that you would have, and different community groups would use your meeting rooms. You spoke about weddings that the private sector could use and host a wedding hall there.
Can this happen?
I have a problem looking at putting public dollars into something that would compete with the private sector that's having a hard enough time encouraging people to use it anyways. As a matter of fact, you just came to another board that I sat on last week, and used that same scenario looking for money. I don't think it was you, I think it was Mr. Jackson, looking for money, where you highlighted the meeting rooms and the wedding space. The city has just spent $38 million between a community center...
Sure, can I ask somebody for a cup of water, because I think that I might have to... Can you have a response for that? Is there... Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Can I continue?
Please.
Thank you. The city has just spent almost $68 million between a new community center and an arena that's being built that will have excess of meeting rooms also. So I guess what I would ask you is, if we already...
Sixty-eight?
Thirty-eight and twenty-six. Close to sixty-eight. Sixty-six, I'm sorry. Thirty-eight and twenty-six were the numbers I got today, today's dollars.
That's not what we spent on the community center.
That was the arena and the community center.
But that's not what we spent.
No. We have those, that's the amount of buildings going up.
That might have been the amount of the cost of the buildings, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. The investment to the community, with the community center and the arena, equals that amount of dollars to provide meeting space for community groups to meet. Our arena is also adding to our complement, meeting spaces to meet, public dollars also. So I guess when I go back to what is your end vision, if your core service is... If your core service is to provide, and the sole, and the purpose of the museum is to provide a care to the history of the community, then meeting space and weddings and maybe piano recitals, I could understand because that falls under culture. But this puts us, gives us, you, public money to compete against private enterprise. And I was a little concerned about that through our meeting.
Well, at the time, I wish you'd voiced that concern, and then we could have addressed it at the time. In effect, you were indicating to us that our numbers didn't warrant what we were doing. Our concern over the years has been to give back to the city as much as we possibly could. And as a result, we put more money into the budget from things that we have, like a gift shop. It's part of what museums do as well. Our hope is through that, that we could provide the city with income back from what we are doing so that the city's grant would not have to be as high as it is. I will happily take what more, as I said to you at that time, when times are better, I will happily ask the city for more money. At the moment, nothing that I can see indicates that good times are coming within the near future, so we have done our best to make those cuts. We also intend to provide something that will give us income, as other museums do, so that we don't have to go to the city for such large grants every year. Is that a reasonable response?
Counselor Inonie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is a reasonable response because that's your response. But to me, that's not, if your numbers aren't warranted, and my concern is we're putting a lot of money in and the community is not coming to your building, any of your buildings. The 3,600 people over three sites to me is very small. I mean, I expressed my opinion in the paper, in this council chamber, and to you in the meeting. But if to increase your numbers, you have to go into a different set of businesses, which is meeting space, wedding space, recital space, then that's not core historical museum business. You're just trying to find something to capitalize to increase your numbers, and I understand that. But it went from to make revenue to save the city money to in better times, we'll ask for more money. So, I don't think the cuts are deep enough. I think the cuts can be much deeper. And just, and I'll end this, because clearly the support around here isn't to save any more money on this. But you made the comment about trying to improve what you're doing, and your passion is fantastic. I told you that at that meeting, and as is the board's. But if the sole purpose is to provide that service to the community, this is providing far much more on taxpayers' dollars than to provide the core services to the museum. And quite frankly, I talked about a couple suggestions out there, and it was, why not in your new $11 million building, cut your meeting space back? We have surplus on that. And move the Chippewa Willoughby Museum amalgamate, because it's not a historical site, as you explained to me that day, move it here and create a new Chippewa wing here and cut the $100,000 and amalgamate the savings into here. I did ask that question, was that a historical building? And it was, the exhibits are historical and that you were maintaining and caring for the historical exhibits. But I'll say to you this, your numbers for your historical exhibits out there don't warrant being rotated. If you're putting through the small number that's going through that Chippewa Willoughby museum, really, two staff member out there to rotate exhibits that nobody's going to see anyway seems to me to be excessive in a time we're supposed to be cutting back. And that's what I asked this council to look at. Didn't minimize the board's work, didn't minimize what the board can continue to raise money for. If it's the passion in history, that could have been done too, looking at those cuts. And I'm sorry that that's not being done at this table. But it was by no means through my meeting with you or here did we discourage the work that the board has done. But I really think looking at $11 million asset is going to be a whole different valley. Can I have one more question for you before I sit down? Are you anticipating any increase in your operational needs from the city when that new building gets up and running?
If I may speak back to the point of Willoughby again, if you don't change your exhibits, people don't come. When you change your exhibits, people come. As we explained to you, I'm sorry if you must shake your head, but that's what happens. Secondly, as far as Willoughby is concerned, I think we, I believe that we meant that the building was not designated. I don't think that we said it was not restored. It's the original schoolhouse that was there. I, you know, from there, okay. But as to the numbers, your numbers and my numbers are different. As far as I'm concerned, the museum is used by everybody who has anything to do with the museum, which includes website visits, which includes calls from museums around the world. The National Army Museum in Great Britain, the United, or the National Infantry Museum in the United States calls our museum for information. We have probably the only five pieces of an American uniform from the Battle of Chippewa that sits in Willoughby. You know, when we talked about that, perhaps my understanding and your understanding are two different things. And because you wrote it down doesn't mean that my understanding is the same as yours. As to your second question, please ask it again so that I can answer it.
Are you anticipating coming to the city for increased operational monies when your new building is built, if it's built?
I suppose it depends on whether you let me rent out the back room. It will certainly, the increase in size will mean that we need to do increased program. We will attempt to do everything that we can not to increase those funds, but I cannot sit here now and say that that won't happen.
Okay, Counselor Mays, please.
Yes, I have some questions. I'm not sure whether Mr. West or Mr. Dulevik can answer these questions for me. Do you mention the Armory Museum or potential museum? Where are we at with that? Is that in your budget or is that in the city's budget?
It's in our budget.
And what are we paying for maintenance on that building?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head right now.
Because I'm just wondering.
Wait a second. Kathy's going to point it out to me on the budget sheet, so I can give that.
I mean, it's a wonderful site, but I'm just wondering, we aren't going to be one day museum tour. And I don't know how far we are along, if that's going to be another museum tour, if there are another costs?
I'm sorry. If I can go back to it, our cost on the armory right now is $29,000.
Is that just for the water and heat or?
Essentially, yeah.
So, that's all it's doing, is just sitting there?
Well, it's presently being used for some storage by another group. The city has asked us if it's okay to put some of their, I can't remember what it was, archival material, in there. And certainly, it's okay with us because it's a city building. And we had intended to, as I say, to, through the process, when we have to actually close the museum, when we close Lundy's Lane, everything has to come out. Because essentially, they start from the floors and the walls and they work in again, as I was talking about with Willoughby. So, we have to get everything out of there, and it seems that since we're already paying for the space and the space could be used for storage, that we move our stuff there.
Well, I agree it's one place for storage. And I'm just wondering down the road, how much more would it spend? If we do open a warm museum or whatever we can do down there, that could be another huge expense for us. Any idea?
As far as the use of that building is concerned, aside from it being an historic building, we're waiting for direction from the city, which is why I'm asking. It's, yes, yeah.
Okay, do I have any other questions of Mr. West? Okay, seeing no other questions, I would think it would be prudent to have a motion of council to approve the museum's revised budget. I have a motion by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Diodati. Any questions or comments of the motion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Counselor Inonie is opposed. I'd like to thank Mr. West and the board very much for coming here today. We'll move on to reports. We have CPS 200901 dealing with the water and sewer rate structure. Sorry. Okay. Mr. Iapita?
Just through the chair, as you can see, we're getting close to the end of the meeting. The report's in there. Hopefully, council's had a chance, or committee's had a chance to read it. We didn't engage in any stakeholders on that. Mr. Belowski's seen the report. He wishes to speak to it today or is suggesting that council at least defer it so that they can hear his comments. That's up to committee, obviously, to consider. You know, I think if Mr. Belowski was to speak right now, we might be here for a little while. Nothing against Mr. Belowski, but I know he's got a lot to say on the report, so council may want to take that into consideration.
Okay. I have a motion for deferral by Counselor Fisher and Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Wing is opposed, and Mr. Burden is opposed as well. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Burden wanted to speak to it.
Through the chair, would you like the other public participants to be notified? If we are going to have a public discussion on that, we have not notified any of the public participants. We certainly have to take the.
Okay. I think it would be prudent, council? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I know that we can't speak to the motion with respect to that, but I was hoping that would be actually a course of action we take.
Well, I think staff is just asking for direction on how we want them to proceed with the next meeting. Do we want them to invite stakeholders?
And I think it's fair that we get more input than less, and that I appreciate Mr. Belowski's comments, but I think that we have to engage the stakeholders, and that that was included in the original recommendation. So, I think if that, whoever had seconder on the deferral would recommend that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. I think that's a friendly amendment. I don't think we need another motion for that. Okay, is there any other new business for committee? Counselor Wing?
Yes, there is some information that's buried in amongst the matter in which I have a conflict, and it's in regard to city-held reserve funds. There's $53,953 in a Heritage Week Reserve Fund, and the indication is that it's for use by the Heritage Week Committee for projects related to the city's celebration of Heritage Week. The Heritage Week Committee was basically three people, one of whom is not a resident, as far as I know, of Niagara Falls. He's never been a taxpayer here. Another's in Stanford Estates. That committee really, the last thing it did was publish the centennial book that Sherman Savitz headed up the effort for. They used to put on a Doors Open type event during Heritage Week, and they haven't done that at all this century. And we have this, you know, fifty, almost $54,000 sitting here. The only Heritage Week activities there's been this century have been put on by, well, the municipal heritage committee advertises, pays for advertising the proclamation, and the heritage committee started off the annual event in Niagara Square and became a partnership with the museums. The museum does most of the organizing now, but there's no other Heritage Week active projects or activities that I'm aware of being planned. So, is this money going to continue to sit here? Or I'm advised by staff that it's a discretionary fund. Why can't we free it up and use it now when we really need money? I have to be careful because it is heritage-related monies, and I think one will spring to mind that I have a conflict on. But we have $54,000 sitting in a reserve fund that there's no immediate use plan for. I'd like to see Sherman Savitz's blessing for freeing up this money for something else, if that's what we decide to do. But I really think we need to look at this money that's in this city-held discretionary reserve fund.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Salsi, that wishes to adjust.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Counselor Wing's sensitivity in terms of her potential conflicts. So, I'd be prepared to make a motion that staff investigate the possible uses for that reserve fund money and report back to council with that, the next meeting if possible.
Do I have a motion by the mayor? Do I have a seconder to the motion? Counselor Carrio? Any questions or comments of the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Is there any other new business for committee? Counselor Carrio?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Where are we going to have a budget discussion?
That's what I was just about to bring up. I think council needs to give some direction to staff, whether or not we want staff to come back with some further reductions. I think we're at $1.524 million in order to close the gap this year. So, I'm not sure what the pleasure of council is, but if we would like staff to come back with further recommendations, then we're going to have to make a motion. Mayor Salsi, please.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, we have staff looking at the attrition aspect for the salaries in respect of the cost of the operation that way. I think we should, we'll possibly make a motion to consider, having staff consider any further areas of reduction and report back to council next meeting.
Okay, motion by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Questions or comments? Counselor Inonie?
I'm going to vote against the motion because I think the rest of the cuts are political. I happened to sit in the staff meeting last week, senior staff meeting, after we sent them back to make further cuts. There's no more rabbits for them to pull out. I saw the frustration sitting in that room. I think the rest of the cuts are going to come back to us where it's political decisions. I mean, this job is not always showing up and opening, shaking hands, and things are always great. Sometimes we're going to have to make some really difficult decisions. This isn't the year. I think next year, it's going to be 10 times worse than this, but we've got to be prepared to make them. And really, I don't think they can cut anymore. I think the decisions from here on out have to be ours. So, I think we have to be prepared to make them, not send them. We've sent them back. I sat through that meeting. They've done, I think, the best that they can. I think the rest is up to us, so I'm going to vote against the motion.
Okay, thanks. There is a, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Carrio?
A comment from Mr. Dulevik, please. Yes, through the chair. I think that's where we're at. We're at where, you know, the staff have, you know, we did that first, the yellow ones, which are really easy, and then we started getting into some service cuts. You know, and one of them was being the pool closure, and there was some willingness here from council to look at that. And that's what we're talking about right now. What is the political appetite here for seeing some real service cuts? There might be a couple more things. We talked about some conferences, conventions, a little bit of dollars here and there. And there's a few other things that we mentioned and will probably mention it again to council. But we're getting into some really tough decisions here. So, and that's where our staff is having some difficulty here. You know, what is the appetite for council to look at some service cuts? Because as we talked about, you know, you've heard it, we've got 2010 to consider, we've got 2011. And when we finish this budget, once it's finalized, I think staff will be coming earlier back to this council to talk about the 2010 budget and try to set some direction there because it is going to be a very difficult budget to deal with. And we're going to be looking for some guidance in that regard. So, that's where we're at right now. So, that's what we're trying to judge from this council. How, if zero is the number, and we want zero, we're not prepared for a tax increase, then you tell staff, yes, we are looking for some service cuts. And all we can look back, is go back to our priority sheets that we did and look at some of these other programs.
Counselor Carrio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that you can see by what we did this evening that there is an appetite. They proposed $2 million in change in cuts, and the only thing we put back is project share. So, I think that you can see that there's committed people around this table. And credit to Counselor Inonie, who's prepared to cut the museum budget, which was, which is obviously not a popular move, and something that the rest of us felt should be enough with a 2% decrease. Well, if they can come with a 2% decrease, maybe there's 2% decreases in other departments rather than saying cut somebody out altogether. Maybe there's 2% here, 2% there, that we give up. There's obviously a will around this table to do what has to be done. It was proven tonight by what we did. We certainly took some tough stands tonight and cut some people that normally wouldn't even take a cut. So, I think that motion's a good one. We send staff back to the drawing board. I believe we should take the attitude that there's not going to be tough decisions made this table. We obviously demonstrated tonight that this council is prepared to make tough decisions in a tough year.
Thank you, Counselor Inonie.
Thank you. There is a tough decision we can make right now, Counselor Carrio, and that's, we have $6 million sitting in a reserve account. Yes, we do. We have five, I think it's $5.8 million sitting in a reserve account that we really don't want to touch because we have next year to look at, and we're focused on going in with a 0%. But 2% here, 2% there is not going to get us to $1.5 million. So, are we going to take a serious look at getting us through this year to next year and have a serious consideration of looking at that $5.8 million and spending 1.5 on it? Or 1.4 or 1.3 when they can get us down a couple hundred thousand dollars? Because even in my, even in my budget, I went looking to cut 2%. I mean, you and I talked a number of times. I'm in this budget all the time. It's driving me nuts because I don't want to see us put any further burden on the residents. But then we have to make a difficult decision. Do we look at using a portion of that money to offset a 0%? And at this point, I mean, we say go find other sources of revenue. Well, every community is telling their staff to go find other sources of revenue. They can only look to the province or the feds or fee increases, and this all comes out of the same pocket. It doesn't matter, there's no other place we can go other than the taxpayer. We can call it a fee, but it's the same thing. So, you know, we can send them back, and I wish them luck. I can't see them finding a million five, but I'm prepared to come back at the next meeting and say, to come back at the next meeting and say, look at, that's, we put it away for a rainy day. Well, it's raining cats and dogs now. Next year's only going to be worse. So maybe that's an option we have to look at.
Okay. 2% of a $90 million budget is 1.8 million, which actually would be enough.
It would be enough.
Is there any other comments by members of council? If, I'm sorry, Counsel Diodati?
Mr. Chairman, I would definitely not want to use up any of that money we've got reserves yet.
Right.
I think, talking about the rainy day and the tsunami's coming next year, I'd rather hang on to that. I mean, I think that's important, a bit of buffer for the future challenges that we're going to have. And I think we're better off, as Counsel Karyo said, let's look within. And at the same time, we have to realize, we have some choices, since about half of all of our money goes toward wages, and since we know that wages are going up with the collective agreement, then we have to realize that something's going to have to do. We're going to have to cut back on services as we've already done. So something's going to have to suffer. Is it going to be winter maintenance? Is it going to be, you know, lawn maintenance? What's it going to be? But something's got to suffer, and that's what we have to realize. Because as far as I'm concerned, using that money that we've got put away, that's like using the curtains to make our clothes. I mean, that's great. Now you have clothes, but now you don't have curtains, you know? So I think we need to hang on to that.
Is that how you got that suit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I already gave him that one.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Let staff come back with a further report. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Inonni is opposed. Motion's carried. Thank you. Is there any other new business for committee? If not, motion for adjournment by the mayor and Counsel Diodati. All those in favor? Opposed. Thank you.